The May 5, 2025 Legislative Session of the Anorund County Council is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silent. Ms. Pickard will now lead us in invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
As we gather here in service to our community, let us take a moment to reflect on the responsibilities entrusted to us. We approach our duties with wisdom, humility, and respect for all voices. May our deliberations be guided by a spirit of cooperation and a shared commitment to the public good. Let our decisions reflect fairness, compassion, and the hope for a better future for all residents of our county. We are grateful for the opportunity to serve, and may our efforts today help strengthen the fabric of our community. The pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that, under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the County Council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under Forms and Publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4412.
Before we open our discussions and public hearings, I would like to remind everyone in attendance, whether testifying or as a member of the audience, we must maintain decorum at all times within these chambers. Please understand that individual conversations in the audience are very disruptive to the proceedings, and I would kindly ask you to step out of the chambers if a side discussion is necessary. We will now open our invitation to the audience. This is an opportunity to speak briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received one piece, which was shared with the Council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using our online testimony tool. Brian Bowles and Kurt Svensson. And also, if there's anyone else here who wishes to speak that did not sign up beforehand, speak on a topic not on the agenda. You may come up at this time as well. Mr. Bowles? Not here? Okay. Mr. Svensson?
Hi, Kurt Svensson Arnold. Tonight's testimony follows up on previous testimony, provides the results of a deep dive over the past month or so into the state-maintained real property data file for Anorund County. My written testimony demonstrates how the county's implementation of the Homestead Credit has resulted in a widespread and significantly large property tax burden inequity. I'll highlight two compelling findings. First, the total assessed value of the Homestead Credit for Anorund, Baltimore, Howard, and Montgomery Counties was obtained and used to calculate a comparable amount of property tax burden that was redistributed as a result of this credit in Fiscal 25. Anorund County's much lower 2% assessment growth cap was directly responsible for the redistribution of $105 million of tax burden in FY25 compared to just $2.8 million in Montgomery County. Second, the more than 150,000 owner-occupied residential properties ranging in value between $100,000 and $1 million were grouped into 91 cohorts by rounding them to the nearest $10,000. Within each cohort, significant winners and losers can be identified. In this analysis, a significant loser is defined as having a property tax bill of at least 50% more than appear in that cohort. Of these 150,000 properties, 78% were identified as significant losers. I've provided a link to an interactive dashboard in my testimony, and I have some handouts here, where you can look up any property account and then instantly get a list of all the other properties within that cohort with a property tax bill of at least 50% less than yours. I encourage my fellow citizens to see where they fit in. It's too late to fix for the Fiscal 26 budget, but there's still time to have a public debate and consider corrective action before the November 2025 state deadline for the 27 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Svensson. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Paul Higgins. I live in Pasadena at 8084 Woodhome Circle. I also serve as the President of the Woodhome Circle Community Association. On Friday, our community received a letter referring to County Project H586900 and H586901. The 00 Project is a capital improvements project that's in the current budget to do some upgrades on Jumper's Hole Road, on Jumper's Hole Road between Mountain Road and Ritchie Highway, to include a traffic light and access for the folks on Woodhome to that traffic light. The 901 Project comes in with the same description, and if you look it up on the webpage, except it drops the language that was added by a former DPW Director to ensure that those links were added when that traffic light went in. Based on the current data on the Anorund County website, neither effort should be in construction and, in fact, should still be in design. The latest feedback WCCA got received in December of 2024 on the 900 Project effort was it was still an internal review and would be released to the public once that was in. Now we get this letter on Friday from the county talking about this interim signal at Evening Star, which states it's going to start in July, and it will allow the county, quote, "to determine if signalizing the intersection will improve traffic flow to and from nearby residential communities." How can we get to this point, having as many studies as we've had on this road, with traffic analysis, and our best approach is a trial and error light in a real-world condition? This approach is dangerous and results in Woodhome residents being used for tests that may be lethal, impact property values, and result in irreparable damage, which was avoidable if there was proper design and analysis performed.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right. Is there anyone else at this time who would like to speak on any item not on the agenda? Okay. The invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? Okay. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved. Allison Pickard?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of the Legislative Session of April 21, 2025.
The County Council meeting was called to order by Chair Hummer at 7:00 PM. It was opened with the invocation given by Ms. Ledbetter and was followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held in the County Council Chambers in Annapolis, Maryland.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Legislative Session of April 21, 2025?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes of the Legislative Session of April 21, 2025 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 4725, In Ordnance Concerning Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies, Resilience Authority Director, Personnel, Classification, and Pay Plans, Classified Service and Exempt Service, Public Ethics, Financial Disclosure. Bill Number 4825, In Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Zoning, Tiny Home Community Development. Bill Number 4925, In Ordnance Concerning County Executive Compensation. Bill Number 5025, In Ordnance Concerning Zoning, BRAC Mixed Use Development.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
We do not have any resolutions to introduce this evening.
Okay. We will now hold a work session-like discussion on Bill Number 3225, and I will turn it over to Ms. Robian.
Thank you. First, I just want to say thank you to my colleagues for entertaining this during our legislative session. For those of you who don't know, we ordinarily have work sessions where we discuss our bills at great length, once a month, on the second Tuesday of every month, but May is our budget season, so we do not have a work session scheduled for the month of May. And the bill that I introduced is not extremely complicated, but worthy of discussion, and I want to just give my colleagues an opportunity to ask questions and understand it before we have the public hearing and possible amendments at our next meeting. So what I'd like to do is just walk folks through the bill, if that's all right. So, hang on a second, let me get my notes here. So basically, what this does is updates our program for SCBDs, and SCBD is a Special Community Benefit District. A Special Community Benefit District is something that a neighborhood can agree to form if enough residents agree, and it allows the county, on the neighborhood's behalf, to collect an assessment for them, similar to an assessment that a neighborhood might collect for the homeowners association, except this is actually collected by the county. And because it's collected by the county, I felt, and I think I was hearing pretty regularly from residents in the neighborhood, that there needed to be a little bit more transparency and accountability. So when the county has at hand in something like an SCBD, we're no longer talking about a completely private entity. We have the county government involved. We've had some, actually, high-profile things in the news lately, and, you know, there's been lots of questions about what is this bill responding to. Let me just start by saying, I started working on this bill. My colleagues probably realize I've been working on this bill for, like, three years, and this is my third attempt to introduce this bill, and hopefully, third time is a charm. It will not do everything for SCBDs. There are still things that may need fixing, but in order to, you know, I hate the expression, but in order to eat an elephant, you have to start with a few small bites. Personally, I would never eat an elephant, but you get what I'm saying. It's better to start with something and get some things accomplished rather than do nothing. So the next thing I think it's important to recognize is SCBDs are not mandatory. So this really is a service that the county provides to communities that choose to participate in an SCBD program. So there's always the option, a community would have to go through a process to dissolve their SCBD, but if they didn't want to have one and they didn't like the terms that the county was putting forward for an SCBD, they could, in theory, gather enough votes to dissolve their SCBD and function like a homeowners association did, where they were collecting their own assessment rather than having the county do it for them. Right now, well, we'll go through the provisions of it. Let's see. Let's just jump into the bill. I'm not going to go into great detail, but I want to just make sure folks have an understanding of the main provisions in this bill. And of course, the public and my colleagues, you're all welcome to ask me questions about what this bill does, and I'm happy to answer and relied heavily on Lori Blair, who I think might be around here somewhere, and has done work with the SCBD program for a long time, and as far as I am concerned, is the county expert on SCBDs. I hope she doesn't mind that title. She might not like it because she might want to run away from them sometimes. But anyway, okay, so let's start. The first provision is looking at the administrative charge that the SCBD communities pay to the county, and it's basically a fee for service. So the county collects payment from the SCBD communities and then gives it back to the community to spend in accordance with the SCBD's own charter document. So this is something, again, HOAs can do this on their own. They don't have to have the county involvement. One of the nice things about county involvement is we're very good at collecting taxes, and it's basically a tax. We're actually extremely good at it. We get our tax assessments collected on property, and I'm grateful that we do because that funds all the important things that we do in county government. As it turns out, the fees that we have been collecting for, the fee structure had not been updated since 1998. So as you can imagine, it was time for an update, and the fees that we are collecting did not cover the actual cost to the county. So if the county is not collecting enough to cover its own cost in administering the SCBD program, what that means is everyone else is paying for the SCBD program as well. And that means they're paying for the administration of a program for communities where they have no access to amenities, because that's what SCBDs usually do with their funds. They take their funds and they spend them on amenities. In a county like Anorund, where we have lots of beautiful waterfront, they fund things like community piers, shoreline erosion projects, swimming pools, docks, all kinds of things that, you know, are lovely about living on the water. And not all SCBDs are waterfront, but a good number of them are, and representing the District of Annapolis, or District 6, which includes Annapolis and the Annapolis Peninsula, as you might guess, I have a good number of SCBDs in my district. So this updates the fee structure. I know there were folks that had, a number of folks that had questions about how we came up with this new calculation. We had to rework the calculation because we currently have an acting auditor and our former auditor, well, I won't say former, I don't know what the correct way is, but our auditor is on a temporary leave, and so we needed to basically put these numbers together. And so I want to thank the various offices in the administration for working so quickly to get those estimates, to recreate those estimates and help pull those numbers. We were pretty close in terms of getting the numbers accurate, in terms of matching what the new fee structure will bring in versus what the cost to the county is. The current cost to the county, as it turns out, is about 200, actually, that's not correct. I'm going to have to do some math on the fly because literally, I got some of these numbers this afternoon. And for my colleagues, this is in a, I know it was very last minute, but we got, it's in a folder that you have in our meeting materials drives. So the county auditor spends approximately $34,000 every year administering SCBDs, the various personnel involved, some working very heavily, spending a lot of time, some personnel spending a lot of time with the SCBDs, others spending just a little bit. The executive branch departments spend collectively about $250,000. So between those two, 200, I'm just going to ballpark it here, 250,000 plus 34,000 is about 285,000. Our fee structure, I think, collects about 300, 325,000. Chris, am I in the right ballpark? I'm turning to our budget officer.
Currently, how much does the fee collect?
I'm sorry, in the proposed, currently, we collect about 125,000, correct?
Yes, thereabouts. And so in '26, under the current provisions unchanged, we're projecting about 130,000.
Okay. And that is a pretty significant shortfall from the actual costs. So the estimated cost that the county auditor spends is about 34,000, and the estimate that the other, the administrative branch department's spend is about $250,000. Am I right there?
I can vouch for the executive branch. I can't, I don't know what the calculations were for the auditor, but in looking at the table that was provided, it's not clear to me whether that's just the wage/salary component or whether that includes fringe benefits. So I would say the numbers for the auditor at a minimum, depending on whether they still need to be calculated for fringe, they would go up from there.
So the current calculation we have does not include the fringe benefits, so that 34,000?
I can't answer that.
Oh, no, no, that's okay. I wasn't expecting D02. But so we, but it's fair to say that between the two, between the administrative branch and the estimate, using the estimate that we received from the Auditor's Department of 34,000, just including the salary component of their costs, we're looking at 285,000 and knowing that that is a low estimate. So right now, we're collecting about 125,000, but the cost to the county is about 285,000 or more. So right now, that means we have well over $100,000 that is being absorbed by the rest of the county. And so that's one of the things that this bill fixes. And as we go towards the public hearing, I'm happy to make adjustments to the fee structure that we've created to make sure that we get as close as possible to the estimates that we have created, because we don't want to go the opposite direction either and have SCBDs overpaying. So just keep that in mind. So that's one, addressing the fee structure. The second piece is ensuring that community members who live in SCBD communities are able to communicate freely with their board members. So often, a community that has an SCBD will often have also an HOA, a homeowners association, but sometimes they do not, and they have a homeowner improvement association. And those officers are the ones that will, depending on how their charter is written, are charged with administering the funds of the SCBD. So it seems fair that residents who pay into their SCBD funds should be able to have communications with the officers that are making the decisions about those funds and other aspects. So it's, this is basically a very simple requirement, asking that SCBD officers of HOAs or improvement associations that administer SCBDs each have an email address, so the residents can reach out to them and discuss, you know, or make suggestions, whatever, about the SCBDs. There is a provision in here, which I've gotten some questions about. It asks members, those officers, to respond to emails within five business days. And then immediately following that talks about all the penalties that SCBDs can incur if they're not following the rules of the SCBD. I want to be clear that the emails, not responding to an email within five days, should never result in the dissolution of an SCBD. It's really just, I view this provision as aspirational. This is what we should be working toward, to be responsive, that SCBD officers are responsive to the people that they represent. Now, however, we have had some significant issues of both fraud and noncompliance, and we actually had a report from our auditor several months ago that listed a pretty significant number. We have over 90 SCBD communities in the county, and we had, actually, I don't remember because it's been a while that I've looked at that, but I want to say, close to half. It wasn't half, and they ranged from minor violations of the SCBD, or minor, I shouldn't say violations, I should say noncompliance, minor instances of noncompliance to very significant ones. And obviously, sorting those things out is one thing that can cost the county a lot of money. So the penalties are reject a budget submission, withhold the appropriation of funds, withhold the disbursement of funds, prohibit the expenditure of funds, or require the community association to reimburse any district funds that have been improperly expended, including through a tax assessment. So all of these things, you know, I'd love to hear feedback. We got some very valuable feedback from a very treasured former county employee who pointed out there may be, we may have an unintended consequence in here, which, you know, I believe we should look at. Dissolution is sort of the ultimate solution. If a SCBD has been in noncompliance, they're not submitting any of their filings for an extended period of time, they've been given warnings of saying you need to start complying with the SCBD rules, you have to file your paperwork and your budgets, then ultimately, the council, and it would be by the vote of a council, could vote to dissolve the SCBD and, you know, sort of deal with all the, any outstanding debt. So those are, none of those are actually, most of those are pretty much what is already in the SCBD program. The final piece is, so so far, we've got, we have an update to the fee structure, we have a communication requirement through emails, we have penalties of SCBDs that are noncompliant, and then the final piece is asking SCBDs to comply with the Maryland Homeowners Association Act and the Open Meetings Act. Now, it's not all the provisions of those two pieces of state law, but it is significant portions. And for my, again, for my colleagues, I created a document because when you are looking through the bill, if you are like I was not long ago, you're flipping back and forth saying they have to comply with 11B-1113, 111B-112A and B, and so on, flipping back and forth between what's in this bill and the state code. So I compiled them all into a single document. So folks that are like, what are all the Maryland pieces that an SCBD would need to comply with? I created that document for you. And I don't think there's any reason we can't make that public. Is that, that's fair, right? Yes, okay. So the public can get, you know, an easier way to look at the compliance. And the last piece of the Maryland Open Meetings Act requires that one member of the SCBD officer or board members takes a one-hour online course that makes sure that they understand what the provisions of the Maryland Open Meetings Act are. And just to make sure I knew what I was getting into, a couple weeks ago, I took the course myself, I did pass, but it's relatively straightforward. It's about an hour long, and you learn, you know, all the different things that you need to comply to be an effective SCBD that follows these basic rules. And I was really trying to do that quickly, to go through all of that quickly, but it is a lot. And like I said, this, there may be more legislation that's needed to address some of the bigger issues we've seen in the community, but I feel like this is intended to be a good start to increase openness and transparency and make sure that the people that are benefiting from being in an SCBD community are the ones who are paying the cost that the county covers to absorb that. So with that, I will happily entertain any questions, and hopefully, we're able to follow that.
I do appreciate that we got the information about the actual cost that the county is spending for that. That's important to see that right now, we're spending more than it cost us, than what we're getting paid back for. So that's valuable information. Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have a ton of questions or actually really any question to ask. I just want to make some notes because I did send the bill out in a newsletter and post it on social media just to get feedback from the SCBDs, Waterway Improvement Districts, all of, all three districts, from my district, District 5. And of the roughly half that have responded, only one was in support. There are serious concerns from some of the SCBDs. The idea that a community could dissolve an SCBD if there wasn't support or if the community felt that the increase in funding was required to keep the SCBD alive and it went to a vote, dissolving the SCBD could mean abandoning important shoreline projects that have stayed, are going through the state approval process, could mean being unable to manage and maintain community property. I heard the assessment rate, these are directly from emails, the assessment rate is a huge issue. We save a higher rate, we save our money. A higher rate would hurt us. Another community says our SCBD budget is small, and we've been mindful of increases to not impact residents on fixed income. This bill is a problem. Another community said smaller civic associations with limited budgets and limited volunteers will be hurt by this. Another said this will kill our volunteers. And there was a question about due process. If someone is seen to be out of falling in line with the requirements of their SCBD and they feel that they are not, there is no due process or appeals process in the legislation. Those are just a few bullet points off the top from District 5.
Very, very fair. I've heard some of those similar comments. Again, the fee structure is really about making sure that the people who benefit from the SCBDs are the ones that are actually paying for them and not other members in the county who do not access the resources in the SCBDs. If it's a matter of, if it could be eased by moving the, slowing the transition, realizing that this hasn't been, that this fee structure hasn't been updated in 27 years, I certainly understand that, you know, a little bit more runway time to get to the actual cost would be a fair, or looking at different ways of assessing the costs, you know, should, I'm open to conversations, but I think the ultimate point of non-SCBD households paying for the things that only benefit SCBD communities, especially when we're talking about very nice amenities, like, you know, in a lot of cases, not in every case, but we're talking about, you know, community waterfronts, like you said, shoreline projects for beaches that are private, are not open to the general public, that piers, community piers, or, you know, boat ramps, whatever, that are not open to the public, that the general public, unless those are open to the public, they shouldn't be funded by the public. And so that's, you know, I certainly understand, no one likes a tax increase, and, you know, for those neighborhoods, in a way, it is, but it also is what's needed to actually cover the costs and put the costs where they belong. cover the costs and put the costs where they belong. With respect to dissolution, I think this is probably for the most severe case. I maybe want to ask, maybe Lori Blair might know the answer to this, but this is the kind of thing that would be used for, we've actually have a situation where there are a handful of SCBDs that simply do not file any longer, and the county has undertaken the burden of basically, you know, completing all of their financial work. And so Lori, is that something you could elaborate on?
Sure. Lori Blair Klosmeyer, Deputy County Attorney. So yes, the dissolution would be pretty, a pretty extreme remedy for a community, probably for a community association that had not complied with any requirements for a number of years. The, the issue that you bring up is the financial statements and required audits. Those are actually required under state law, and we do currently have a community that's several years out of compliance. We, we aren't really thinking about dissolving it, we're thinking about trying to get them to come into compliance somehow, so, but that's, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, you know, dissolution is a very severe solution. It actually isn't really beneficial to the county. It's benef, you know, it's beneficial for the sake of, you know, a lot of, you know, even though the SCBDs might have property that is not accessible to the general public, what happens on the shorelines does impact the general public. So if you have an eroding shoreline, that affects people downstream, that affects anyone who uses the waterways or the Chesapeake Bay in general. So, you know, I, I think there's, the bigger, the bigger goal would really be to pull people into compliance, but also make sure that there's, you know, real transparency. And I would urge my colleagues to look through the state provisions that we'd be pulling in, because most of them are things that you would, I think, or things you probably expect your SCBD is already doing. You know, basically, providing, you know, providing sufficient notice, allowing people appropriate opportunity to vote in their community votes, having accurate meetings from, you know, minutes, minutes from meetings and things like that. So there, there are things that hopefully most communities are already doing, that an organization that, you know, can be handling tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars and some tame, you know, that really are coming from those communities, there ought to be some accountability for them, and at least, at a very least transparency. This doesn't create probably the level of accountability that some would like. A lot of SCBDs, when they fall out of compliance, they end up having to go to the courts to resolve their differences. And sometimes, you know, there are criminal charges involved. So it doesn't go to the full, you know, to the full extent to address accountability, but it puts the, mainly, it's the idea that, hey, if someone else is having a dinner out, why am I paying for someone else's nice dinner out? And making sure that if someone, if a community has nice things, that the members in that community are able to have a say about them and what they spend them on.
Not tonight, but Mr. Trumbauer, could your office provide the council in the future with what the average size, average amount of a dispersment is to the different SCBDs?
Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. Madam Chair, can you explain what you mean by that?
Well, we have all those, we're looking at this fee schedule for the different amounts, and I'm just curious, what is the average-sized dispersment? I mean, are we looking at small dispersments of, you know, $25,000 for something, or are we looking at large amounts of $200,000?
It's all over the map, but we, yeah, I mean, it depends on the size of the community, what the community is doing. As the sponsor mentioned, there's some very small, there's some large. I mean, you know, Crofton is an SCBD, Hillsmere is an SCBD, they're very large, and then you have smaller communities where there may only be a couple dozen property owners. So, I mean, we, we have data, we can provide you with whatever you want. You can contact my office with the specifics, and Janey Moulden and myself will work something up, and we can do that in advance of the public hearing.
I'm just curious, when we look at this, you know, the increase in fees, what kind of impact we'd be looking? I know it's limited to $10,000 even at the most, but what kind of difference would it make, especially for some of our smaller ones? Would this really be, be a significant hit to our smaller?
Sure, we can put something together for you.
Okay.
And would I, would it be all right if I responded to that point? I had heard that a number of communities were concerned about, you know, going straight. So basically, the, the fee has two parts to the calculation. There's the percentage of the overall collection amount that's collected for that SCBD that goes to cover the administrative costs, but then there's a cap. So currently, the cap is $2,000 per SCBD. This bill would raise it to $10,000, and a number of communities have commented that that is a very significant, that would cause a very significant change. And while the percentage is, changes over the period of several years, we did not create a similar step, you know, sort of gradual increase for the, for the $10,000 cap. And I think that that would be a very reasonable amendment that I will, actually, I will very likely be sponsoring. So look for that on the, what is it, May 19th? May 19th?
Are there any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Administration, you have anything you want to add? Thank you, Ms. Rodgian, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much for indulging me since we didn't get a work session. I really appreciate your time digging in.
All right. So, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 2725.
Bill Number 2725, An Ordnance Concerning Indian Hills Special Community Benefit District Approval of Loan and Assignment Agreement.
Since we're talking about SCBDs, we're going to go roll right into this bill about that. Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Chris Trumbauer, our Budget Officer, and Lori Blair Klosmeyer, Deputy County Attorney. So this, okay. So this bill is for the Indian Hills Community Association, which administers the Indian Hills Special Community Benefits District. It's submitted at their request, it places a multi-year obligation on the district for a loan from First Citizens Bank in the amount of $190,000, and will be repaid with the special taxes assessed to the property owners in the SCBD to improve a community-owned playground. We're happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or discussion? All right, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 2725. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 2725? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 2725 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 2725.
Bill Number 2725, An Ordnance Concerning Indian Hills Special Community Benefit District Approval of Loan and Assignment Agreement.
Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 2725.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodgian.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill Number 2725 has passed.
All right. Thank you all. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 1325.
Resolution Number 1325, Resolution Designated May 10, 2025 as National Pan-Hellenic Council Day in Anaronda County to Recognize the Contributions Made to Social Change by Members of the Nine Black Sororities and Fraternities Known as the Divine Nine.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to sort of elevate this organization. I've learned in, in politics, sometimes when you don't know, when you have knowledge about something, you don't know that it exists. And there's a treasure that we have in our county, certainly in the country, an element called Divine Nine. And you all have read the resolution. It is a consortium of fraternities and sororities, specifically in the African-American community, that has done a tremendous amount of, of growth, a tremendous amount of advocacy, mentorship, you name it, it exists in Anaronda County. I, if, if I could, I did want a couple of the members to come up, I don't know if there was the public testimony piece, I didn't read the script on that. And so I was going to save some remarks on that, but I did want you all to have an opportunity to hear from some of the fraternities and sororities that have done amazing jobs, and specifically in the black community, because we often hear bad things about the black community, but you don't hear too, too many things, or too much about these organizations. And they have done a tremendous amount of uplift in ensuring that our, you know, young people who live in our communities and live in our county have someone to anchor to and to look up to. I love these folks, and so that's what I wanted to introduce you all to them, because they've been around longer than I've been alive. They did not just show up in Anaronda County yesterday. And so, with that said, I'll save my remarks until after the public testimony, but I'm so grateful to just share with you a little bit of, of our history and who we are in this county, and these people represent what that history is. And so, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. We will now open the public hearing on Resolution Number 1325. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received three pieces, which were shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Okay. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. Sean Ashworth, Brian Bowles, Carla Nelson, Adrian Waite, and Newton Gentry III.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Sean Ashworth, 3432 Old Crown Drive, Pasadena, Maryland. I am honored to offer testimony and strong support of resolution to designate May 10, 2025, as the National Pan-Hellenic Day in Anaronda County. As a member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated and advocate of civic engagement and equity, I stand today to affirm the tremendous impact that the National Pan-Hellenic Council, affectionately known as the D9, has made in our communities through tireless service, pr�ncled leadership, unwavering dedication to social justice since its founding in 1930 at Howard University. These organizations were created at a time when African-Americans were denied access to many educational, economic, and social institutions. Despite these barriers, the D9 has culturally, has cultural generations of college-educated leaders who have made major contributions to civil rights, education, public health, and community empowerment. Here in Anaronda County, the D9 continues its powerful legacy by supporting the welfare of our residents through active and intentional engagement. Members have served as mentors in partnership with Anaronda County Public Schools, Be Present Initiative, and have provided critical guidance and inspiration to our youth. They have also engaged in purposeful partnerships and collaborations with local organizations to address gaps in housing, healthcare, economic development, physical and mental health, and education. This level of sustained commitment reflects the best of what community service should be: comprehensive, compassionate, and community-driven. I urge the council to designate May 10, the National Pan-Hellenic Council Day, for it would serve as a fitting tribute to the pan whose founding would have served as public affirmation of the enduring value of these organizations that we bring to our county and beyond.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ashworth. Mr. Bowles.
Brian Bowles, 563 Jan Road, Middlesbrough, Maryland. I'm here to support Resolution 1325 for National Pan-Hellenic Day in Annapolis here. I believe that it's very important that, as mentors within Alpha Phi fraternity incorporated, that we seek towards scholarship and service towards all mankind. The greatness about what we do within this community and the many things that we have accomplished and what we strive to do more is to make sure that all our students have an access to a mentor and be able to work with other adults and have that other liaison to help them in their future endeavors, and definitely for their scholarship towards college. The greatest thing about this collective organizations that we're here is because that we work together, we look at different things that are there, and provide access and honoring scholarships to other people. It gives the students a, ahead of, it gives them, excuse me, it gives them a greater joy and an opportunity to say that this is what I can have, this is what I can obtain. And that's the greatest thing, that we want to make sure we continue to uplift our students, uplift our communities, and do great things within the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Ms. Nelson.
Carla Nelson, 1938, Polonia Court in Odenton. Good evening, Madam Chair, and esteemed members of the council. I am here to give my unwavering support for Resolution 1325 designating May 10, 2025, as National Pan-Hellenic Council Day in Anaronda County. The Divine Nine, the storied black Greek letter organizations under the National Pan-Hellenic Council, carry a combined legacy of 800 years of service, impact, and leadership. Nationally, we contribute more than 2 million hours of volunteer service per year, and over $5 million in scholarships, fueling hope, opportunity, and progress in communities that need it the most. But here in Anaronda County, our impact is deeply personal. We aren't just historic names and proud letters. We are mentors in our classrooms, advocates in our, at our polls, and leaders in our neighborhoods. We are the heartbeat of community change, championing equity in health, justice in policy, excellence in education, and unity across generations. Our work is not performative, it is persistent, it is powerful, it is purposeful. By passing Resolution 1325, you do more, you do more, you do more than commemorate, you affirm, you celebrate, you elevate the Divine Nine, our relentless pursuit of justice, excellence, and service. Let us stand together and honor legacy and ongoing contributions to these vital organizations that we know as the Divine Nine. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Ms. Waite?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Adrian Waite, 14929 Bellamy Drive, Laurel, Maryland. And so I am the immediate past president and charter member of the Lambda Delta Sigma Chapter of Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority Incorporated, which services the city of Annapolis and the surrounding Anaronda County communities. I am also the sitting vice president of the Anaronda County Alumni Council of the National Pan-Hellenic Council, and I'm here to speak in support of Resolution Number 13-25. Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority Incorporated is an international collegiate and nonprofit community service organization founded on November 12, 1922, at Butler University in Indianapolis, Indiana. The sorority is committed to enhancing the quality of life for women and their families in the United States and globally through community service, civil, and social action. The Lambda Delta Sigma Chapter was chartered on May 16, 2010, and continues to bring the mission of Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority Incorporated to Anaronda County. The chapter has been a member of the Anaronda County Alumni Council of the National Pan-Hellenic Council since the chartering on March 12, 2016. It is an honor to support this resolution, which seeks to acknowledge the founding of the National Pan-Hellenic Council. The 11 chapters that collectively make up the Anaronda County Alumni Council of the NPHC have been doing exceptional work with its programming and efforts in partnering with organizations to support the citizens of Anaronda County. In recent years, the Alumni Council of the NPHC has financially supported the Anaronda, some Anaronda County organizations, such as the Anaronda County Food Bank, Saris House, the Anaronda County Public Schools Foundation, and the Annapolis Lighthouse Shelter, equating in most recent years of over $10,000 of contributions. In addition, the council also provides scholarships to graduating high school seniors and college students of the Anaronda County, for which we have provided more than $15,000 in granting money. And so for that, I wish to support the Resolution of 13-25. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waite. Mr. Gentry.
Good evening. My name is Newton Gentry III. I reside at 314 Broad Creek Drive in Annapolis, Maryland. It's my pleasure to stand before the Anaronda County Council, County Council, and provide my support for the resolution proposed by Councilman Pete Smith to designate May 10 as National Pan-Hellenic Council Day in Anaronda County. I currently serve as president of the National Pan-Hellenic Council here in Anaronda County. The National Pan-Hellenic Council provides a forum for member organizations to foster cooperative actions of member organizations in dealing with matters of mutual concern. To this end, the National Pan-Hellenic Council promotes the well-being of its affiliated fraternities and sororities, facilitates the establishment and development of local councils of the National Pan-Hellenic Council, and provides leadership and training for its constituent organizations. The primary purpose and focus of the local National Pan-Hellenic Councils and member organizations remains community awareness and action through educational, economic, and cultural service activities. The National Pan-Hellenic Council of Anaronda County was established to foster relationships among, among member organizations throughout Anaronda County. We create opportunities for member organizations to support our senior citizen community, youth and young adult development programs, homeless populations, and families with food insecurity. and young adult development programs, homeless populations, and families with food insecurities. We currently address these concerns through our contributions and volunteer services provided at the nursing homes in North, South, and West County, Sarah's House, as was previously mentioned, the Lighthouse Shelter, Anaronda County Food Bank, Toys for Tots, and our high school and college scholarship programs. We fully support the resolution created by the created for the National Pan-Hellenic Council Day, May 10, 2025, in Anaronda County, Maryland, as proposed by Councilman Pete Smith. On behalf of the 11 organizations represented by the National Pan-Hellenic Council, we encourage your support of Resolution Number 1325. Thank you for your time and consideration presented by Newton Gentry III.
Thank you, Mr. Gentry. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak on Resolution Number 1325? If so, come up at this time, and you may all be seated. Come up to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Again, remarks are limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Good evening. Tiana Parker, 904 Osprey Way, Annapolis, Maryland, 21409. To the honorable members of the Anaronda County Council, the members of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Delta Pi Omega Chapter of Annapolis express our strong support for the resolution to designate May 10, 2025, as National Pan-Hellenic Council Day in Anaronda County. This recognition is a meaningful tribute to the legacy and impact of the nine historical Black Greek letter organizations known collectively as the Divine Nine. As proud members of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Delta Pi Omega Chapter, we are honored to submit testimony on behalf of our chapter, a dedicated body of women who have been serving the Annapolis community since our chartering on October 25, 1947. The Delta Pi Omega Chapter was established by five trailblazing women, Mamie Holly, Bernice Johnson, Sylvia McMillan, Virginia Richardson, and Henrietta Thompson. For over 75 years, Delta Pi Omega has upheld the mission of service to all mankind. Through transformative community engagement in Anaronda County, the chapter has been a force for good, awarding academic scholarships, mentoring youth, leading public health and environmental initiatives, and supporting local families through food drives notably our environmental initiatives. Work includes efforts to plant trees through and beautify in some of our most environmentally vulnerable communities with annual cleanup and beautification efforts throughout the city and the county. We take pride in our city, and we take pride in the county that we live in. Initiated personally into this membership in fall 2020, fall 2021, I've had the honor of supporting many of these programs and witnessing firsthand the deep commitment my sisters have to sustainable people-centered change. It is through this strength of sisterhood and the broader Divine Nine community that we continue to advance justice, equity, and empowerment. This resolution not only commemorates May 10, 1930's founding of the National Pan-Hellenic Council in Howard University, for which Alpha Kappa Alpha was the chartering organization of, but it also uplifts the powerful, ongoing work of Divine Nine members across Anaronda County.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Dr. Robert Duse. I live in 700 Drake Way, Annapolis, Maryland, District 6. I didn't have I don't have any written remarks, but I had to come in and at least say a couple of words. I'm the vice pole marker, vice president of the Annapolis Alumni Chapter of Kappa Alpha Psi, 39-year member. And so I've been in the fraternity for quite some time, seven different cities, five states. So I come in to support this resolution because I want you all not only to know what we do and why is this important, and then who are we as members? I'll can tell you some of the things. I'll use myself as an example, not to be braggadocious, but I will share some things that that's not an anomaly. So what have I done since I've been in Annapolis, only 11 years? I was at the Naval Academy for my last four 31 years in the Navy. So what we do, I was the president of Rotary Club of Annapolis. I was on the Boys and Girls Club, the board. I'm on the Community Action Agency of Anaronda on the board. I've served on the Board of Appeals for the City of Annapolis. Now, I mentioned a few of these things because only because I'm not I'm not anomaly. If you look at the members that are behind me, you heard some of the comments about what the members do. We are representative of all walks of life in Annapolis and Anaronda County. In our case, we serve all of Anaronda County as Annapolis Alumni Chapter, Kappa Alpha Psi, but you need to know the members are among you. You just don't know who they are. I can mention Carol Henson. I can mention I go on and on about politicians, public servants, but who we really are, we're educators, we're public servants, we're police officers, we're attorneys, educators. I mean, we could go down the line. So I really want you to know who we are, not necessarily just what we do. So we represent Annapolis, we represent Anaronda County, and we try to fulfill fill some of those gaps that were mentioned earlier. So I won't take up much more time than that, but I really want you all to know who we are as the D9 organization, as somebody who's been in the organization for 39 years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So seeing no further movement, the public hearing on Resolution Number 1325 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 1325.
Resolution Number 1325, Resolution Designating May 10, 2025, as National Pan-Hellenic Council Day in Anaronda County to Recognize the Contributions Made to Social Change by Members of the Nine Black Sororities and Fraternities Known as the Divine Nine.
All right. Ms. Rodvian.
I would like to be added as a co-sponsor to this resolution, and I would ask my colleagues to join me as well.
Noted. Thank you, Ms. Rodvian.
All right. Anyone else like to be added? Not putting anyone on the spot.
I would like to be added. Thank you.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Please add me as well.
Ms. Fiedler.
I didn't want to push while Ms. Pickard was up. Oh, okay. Yes, please add me as a co-sponsor. I just have to say, as I was listening to each of you speak, I would glance over at Councilmember Smith, and he was just beaming with such pride. I saw the photo posted at the Maryland General Assembly with the Divine Nine on the stairs. Beautiful picture. It was so wonderful to hear some of your stories tonight, so thank you for coming out.
Ms. Pickard.
Please add me as a co-sponsor. So I have to correct the last gentleman who spoke, though, because you said we don't always know you're there. I'm sorry, we always know you're there. Because any time I go to any community event, there are some or multiple representatives of the Divine Nine working there, always. And you can tell who they are because y'all are very good about wearing your colors everywhere you go. And I mean, Deltas, I see there's an earring or jewelry on every time I see, so I spot you everywhere. And I'm so grateful because, as I said, I see you at every community event that I go to. You are present, you are putting your words into action. There's Alpha Kappa Alpha Chapter that has adopted a school in my community and are there all the time, and I'm just so grateful for all your service. So I'm very happy to to recognize and thank you for all you do. So, Mr. Smith.
I'll try to be brief. You know, I simply, and she's right. I think the reason I'm so proud and so honored to be here is if some of you all just knew where most of these folks, and including myself, where we started from and the environment that we grew up in and how hard it was to get out of that environment and to not have advocates and mentors who we could look up to. Because I didn't. I'm telling you, the folks who were around me did not display excellence. But when I see these folks in this audience and I see them out in the community, it's just like, man, I mean, I feel like I'm in Wakanda, to be honest with you. Because I feel like these men and women represent the best of who we are in my specific community. And it's not it's not a slight in anything. I'm just I'm just I've seen a lot, and I'm so proud to just see and how strong and enabled they enabled they are in the communities that we that we live in. Because too often, we hear stories in the Black community that don't highlight the successes and the beauty of our people. But when you hear and you know these folks, you truly understand the richness and the value of the culture that we have and the struggles that we've overcome to get where there are all these folks here, college-educated, ready to sort of just just take over the world. And I believe the county should certainly do more with these organizations because they do represent some of the best of who we are as a county. The lives that they collectively have impacted is immeasurable. The community is often judged by its cover without even knowing the content. And so I know the content of every single person in this room, and I am telling you, it is a great novel that only tells a beautiful story that Anaronda County has had for generations. And so this resolution is just one way of saying, thank you, thank you, thank you for being who you are and representing what you are, because I'm telling you, it moves young people. It moved me. And here it is, you know, a middle-aged guy like myself. And so but I wanted to share that love and that joy that I have with you all, with the rest of the county. And for those who did not know who you were, you know now. They have been here for decades, and they are a light that I believe can can help this county go down a positive continue to go down a positive direction. And I'm just proud to be a member of it and to be blessed by seeing you all in action every single weekend, whether it's Sean in North County with the food deliveries for Food for Thought. That's what it is. Food for Thought, or the Alphas, they even got their own street name, Alpha Way, right there. But I think they're the like the sort of coolest organization right now. They got literally got a street name after them. We got to up our games, Kappas. And to my brothers in blue, you know, you guys are just a genuine force to know and to understand. I know many of you, you give up so much of your time into the Deltas, the SG Ros, I mean, you name it, I can keep going on, the AKAs, they show up and they show out. And so continue to do that, and don't let the world change any recipe that you have designed, because I'm telling you, it is a great meal, and it fills me up. And I'm just proud to to eat from you every single day and every single opportunity I have to be a part of your organization. So thank you all. Harriet Tubman once said that every great dream begins with dreamers. And every single person in this audience, and those Divine, you guys are dreamers. Keep dreaming, because I I've seen the vision. Thank you. Appreciate it.
So we are about to call the roll, but before I do, I know we have others in there. If you are a member of the Divine Nine, would you stand up, please? Thank you. I just wanted us all to be to see everybody who is here represented tonight. All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 1325.
Ms. Ledbetter. Thank you all for being being here tonight, and thank you for what you do. Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 1325 has been adopted.
And May 10 will be National Pan-Hellenic Day. All right. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of Bill Number 925 as amended and Bill Number 1025 as amended.
Bill Number 925, Inordinance Concerning General Development Plan, Region One Plan. Bill Number 1025, Inordinance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning, Region One.
And to all of you, you are welcome to stay, but the rest of our meeting is land use, which is rather boring. I'm sorry, Ms. Pompah. I'm sorry, I hurt your feelings, but yes, it's not quite as exciting as the Divine Nine. So, Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Christina Pompah, our Deputy Planning and Zoning Officer, Cindy Carrier, our Planning Administrator, and Mark Wildong, our Senior Planner for Region One, which covers Brooklyn Park, Lythicum Heights, Curtis Bay, Ferndale, BWI Airport Area, Harmonds, as well as part of Hanover. This is the last hearing for this bill.
Last hearing.
This set of bills. We are happy to answer any questions, but I will turn it over to Ms. Pompah first if she has any remarks she wants to make. Nope.
No? Okay. All right. Any discussion? Mr. Smith.
Listen, it's I wish we can continue this for another three, four months, but all good things.
You are the only one.
All great things come to an end. And so, Ms. Pompah, it's Mark, you know, thank you all for for being patient with me and the dozens and of dozens of amendments that have come across. I was simply just trying to represent the people who sent me here. And, you know, if 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 I was mean in any way, charge it to the head and not the heart, I just am really passionate about the communities that are impacted by these decisions, and I really want them to feel like their voices were heard when we go through this process. But you all were a tremendous team dealing with this region, and so I'm just grateful to have spent the last three, four months, at least on this region specifically, working out these kinks with this this land use bill. So thank you, thank you, thank you, and your team for being a part of this journey. That's it.
All right. We will now open the joint public hearing on Bill Number 925 and Bill Number 1025. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
We did, but Ms. Pickard had her light on.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Pickard, I did see your light. I need to skip you. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You must have known that I was going to counteract your your boring land use story. I do want to say thank you to the group, but really, land use, land use and land use policy is the last frontier of social justice. So the Divine Nine have left, but I think this the region plan and the one that we're going to vote on after it makes great strides to support and elevate communities in our district. So I think it's quite fascinating and exciting. But it is going to be a long meeting if we talk all night. But thank you for all your hard work, and I look forward to voting aye on both of these bills.
I mean, no disrespect to land use people is incredibly important, but it is can be kind of dry for the layperson. I know. I'm sorry, Ms. Pompah. So, all right. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received two pieces for Bill Number 925 and seven pieces for Bill Number 1025, which were shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Okay. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. We have three people signed up ahead of time. Abdullah Hijazi, Peter Chinlopi, and excuse me if I am pronouncing these incorrectly, Eddie Diaz Campbell. And if there's anyone else here who wishes to speak on Bills Number 925 or 1025, you may come up at this time as well. All right, sir, you may go ahead.
Good evening, members of the council. Abdullah Hijazi here from the law firm of Hijazi &amp; Carroll at 3231 Superior Lane in Bowie, Maryland. First, I want to thank the staff and members of the council for everyone's hard work on Bills 9-25 and 1025. And I'm here on behalf of Effect Inc. and Mr. Chinloy. We appreciate the bills, but we were a little bit taken aback and surprised by the fact that the property that belongs to my client at 814 South Camp Mead Road in Lythicum was actually downzoned in in contravention to the recommendations that were in the Land 2040 general plan. In that plan, our client's property had been recommended for industrial zoning, so we expected that when the general plan for this region came out that it was going to be rezoned to industrial. The plan does not do that. In fact, it recommends that it be downzoned back or retain its residential zoning in contravention to the recommendations of the Land 2040 plan. We believe that respectfully believe that that's not a proper zoning since the property is surrounded by institutional industrial uses. There are no houses anywhere near this. It has a cell tower on the property, so it doesn't really make much sense for the property to be zoned residential. I don't think anybody would want to live in that location with a cell tower being on one side and then the BWI parking lot on being on that side. So we respectfully request that the property be rezoned to industrial in line with the Land 2040 plan and in line with all the recommendations that came after that, leading up to this Region One draft plan. Our client spent thousands of dollars and countless hours trying to make sure that he worked with staff to leading up to the 2040 plan and expected this to be the culmination of that. But in fact, it's taken him back basically back to before 2020, and it would be a total loss of his time and money if it was not rezoned to W1. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Peter Chinloy, 6506 Earthline Court in McLean, Virginia. I work for Effect Inc. We acquired the property from the county in 2000 We acquired the property from the county in 2018. It had been abandoned by the previous owner, and no taxes had been paid. Since then, we have been paying taxes on this property. And even though we receive no rent, we do not own this cell tower. It's owned by a separate provider, American Tower. And so, we receive no rent, and we're paying taxes and, as mentioned, paying operating expenses as well. The property lies in a line along Camp Mead Road. The line has the marked train, a BGE substation, 790 and 820 Camp Mead Road, and then our address at 814 Camp Mead Road. 790 and 820 comprise the parking spot north, which is under expansion pressure. Effect, since 2018, has been working on redeveloping the project. We succeeded in getting a rezoning to industrial, W1, in 2020. The county included it in the Plan 2040 map. The Region One's Plan Stakehold Advisory Committee and the county's Planning Advisory Board recommended industrial land use. With all of those recommendations in favor, somehow, this didn't occur. And we are now asking that this be corrected. Development is consistent, with industrial is consistent with the adjacent properties, which are in fact zoned on W1. And parking spot north, on a recent survey, is next door neighbor.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Rob Busick, 7048 Aviation Boulevard. I just want to go on the record for the final time, hopefully, and let everyone know that my intention, full transparent, is not to sell my property. My intention is to make sure that Best Pro is our community neighborhood contractor. And I specifically want to let Mr. Ken over here know that my intentions are to make the property very beautiful, as I already have, and I want to finish it. And I really, I don't want to disrupt the community. I want to be involved in the community. And over the past three months, I've really gotten enlightened with Ferndale community as I grew up there. But now, I'm heavily involved in going to the meetings. And I realize that I want to be, I want to be on the board. I want to make a difference there, okay? As a business owner, and I want other business owners to join me. Because we do care about Ferndale very much. And I don't want to disrupt it. And I actually want to make it a beautiful neighborhood that I grew up in. And I think it's got all the potential in the world. But I've seen a lot of stuff that I actually just learned from Ms. Lisa Rodvian about communities and how, and I just looked it up, and I was like, okay, this is all happening for a reason. I want to be involved. So, just want to let the record know that my intentions are to be a good neighbor, okay? And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Robert Busick, 7048 Aviation Boulevard. Good evening, council. When we acquired 7048 Aviation Boulevard, our goal from the very start was to put our business there, Best Pro Company. And that remains the goal still to this day. The zoning change is a significant step that will allow us to properly operate on the property and continue to grow our roofing and general contracting business at this location. We made significant improvements to the property already and are committed to continuing that effort while being a positive, long-term asset in the community of Ferndale. I want to thank the many supporters who submitted online comments and attended the April 21st meeting. It means a great deal to my family and to my business to have that support in the community. Lastly, I want to thank the members of the council for your time and thoughtful consideration throughout this entire process. I honestly had no idea when this first entire thing kind of started that, you know, even these meetings were going on. And I've encouraged a lot of my friends and to watch on the video, watch online or even attend. And yeah, that's all I have to say, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hello, and good evening, Madam Chair and council members. My name is Ken Dome. I live at 329 Ferndale Road, and I'm here to speak in opposition to zoning changes CZR1, FND for Ferndale, 0002, and CZR1 FND for Ferndale, 0300. I look at the property address, 748 Aviation Boulevard, every day out my kitchen window. This lot is not your typical commercial lot. It's a residential property. It was since I grew up there on Ferndale Road, has been. They keep a residential building there. These revisions will change the zoning. These revisions will change the zoning from SB to C4 if the current Amendment 20 stands. Once again, small business zoning is created to preserve the appearance of the neighborhood in which it is zoned. For some reason, the current owner believes a need to change from SB to C4. His business is Best Pro Cleaning Service. Why in the world is he going through all this to get C4 zoning? Something's not right. For example, the current owner is allowing a food trailer to park on his property. Now, they have a gas generator running seven days a week next door to my house. Once again, help us keep this gateway to our community free of any eyesores and cholera. I'm asking Councilman Peter Smith to reverse his decision to override the PAB recommendation of C1 and withdraw his C4 zoning amendment number 20. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak on Bills Number 925 and 1025? Okay. Seeing no movement, the joint public hearing on Bills Number 925 and 1025 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 925 as amended and 1025 as amended.
Bill Number 925, Inordinance Concerning General Development Plan, Region One Plan. Bill Number 1025, Inordinance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning, Region One.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Smith?
Just quickly for Mr. Diaz Campbell, we'll continue to work to try to, he was sort of lost in the process as we were doing the zoning throughout this. I think, I think it came, at least I was made aware at the last minute with his particular change that was sort of captured from, I'm aware. But, I mean, we can, we can see what we can do to mitigate that. But I am aware of it, that he's in a unique situation. And to Mr. Ken and the rest of the Ferndale community that, you know, these decisions are not made lightly. There's, I feel like there's always two sides to a coin, or a winner and a loser. And I hate that when it comes to some of these zoning decisions. Because I think all of us, we just want everyone to be successful and happy with the decisions we ultimately come to. But unfortunately, that doesn't always happen all the time. But for the Ferndale community specifically, know that I will continue to work with the landowner for the 7048. There are things we can do to work with them to make sure, you know, we are mindful of the community and the identity of the community. It's own Aviation Boulevard right around the airport. And so, there are some things we can do to make sure that road, access to that road is taken care of, and the community doesn't feel like they're being left out. Because they're not. They're not. I have heard them, trust me. And I also believe in the business side of the house and trying to make sure we can, especially with, I was gonna say Trey, that's not your official name, Robert. But, you know, I had a conversation with him, and I trust the young man. I'm not, I actually, when we sat down and we had this conversation on what your vision was, I believed in you. And so, a lot of my faith is gonna be placed in you. Not to say your dad is not, not there with you, but I believe in you and I trust you that everything you told me, that we're gonna work on to make sure the community is not impacted in a negative way. And so, thank you for being that voice. And so, with that, I think we're at a place where the legislation can be voted on.
Yep. Any other comments? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 1125 as amended.
Oh, I apologize. That should read Bill Number 925 as amended.
Oh, no. You're right. It's, I'm sorry. Nope. No, that was my bad. I looked down at the bottom of the page instead of the top of the page. I jumped ahead. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 925 as amended.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey. Absent. Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Bill Number 925 as amended has passed.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 1025 as amended.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey, still. Absent. Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Bill Number 1025 as amended has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of Bill Number 1125 as amended and Bill Number 1225 as amended.
Bill Number 1125, Inordinance Concerning General Development Plan, Region Three Plan. Bill Number 1225, Inordinance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning, Region Three.
Okay. And Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Christina Pampa, our Deputy Planning and Zoning Officer, Cindy Carrier, our Planning Administrator, and Patrick Hughes, our Senior Planner for Region Three, as well as Kelly Kenny, our Supervising County Attorney. Region Three covers Glen Burnie Severn, as well as parts of Millersville. And I will turn it over to Ms. Pampa for any additional remarks.
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So, when we talked about the Region Nine bills, I thought I talked at the wrong place. And so, I waited on the last two bills, and then I missed my opportunity. So, what I'm gonna say now, I also would like to apply to the Region One Bills, nine and 10. Four years ago, on May 3, 2021, the council was deciding on Plan 2040. It's hard to believe that it's been four years, but it has been. And here we are, four years later, and we're basically two-thirds of the way through with one of the biggest implementation recommendations of the general development plan. And that is, the region plans and Nine has already been adopted, and One was just adopted. And now, here we are with Three. This is the culmination for the Office of Planning and Zoning of two years of work. And up until the time that the region plan and the comprehensive zoning bills are introduced to the county council, we lead the process. But once the bills are introduced, then OPZ becomes a secondary player. The county council accepts zoning applications and maintains accurate information on their website, and the council members decide whether or not to support requests for amendments. Council members may seek technical assistance from OPZ. And if amendments are sponsored, OPZ prepares technical information and maps that form the base of each amendment that's prepared by the Office of Law. Most properties need signage, which OPZ prepares. And it's an understatement, an absolute understatement to say that there's a lot of coordination. There's a massive amount of coordination. And I just want to thank Kaylee Schultz and her staff, all the staff in the Office of Law, as well as each council member's legislative assistant. In the last several months, they have managed many back-and-forth questions and dialogue to get amendments prepared and accurate for these council meetings. Finally, we appreciate each of the council members. Thank you for the work and coordination you do with property owners, communities, and other stakeholders. Your job is very difficult, and we appreciate the time you take when making the decisions that you make. The county is very fortunate to have legislators who are as dedicated and deliberative as you are, and it's been an honor to work with you in this process. And I think Patrick has some comments to say as well. Mr. Hughes. I apologize.
Thank you. Patrick Hughes, Office of Planning and Zoning. I would echo Christina's comments. And then, in addition, I would like to extend my gratitude to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee for Region Three. This is a profoundly deliberative and respectful group as they worked through all of the recommendations of the plan and the draft zoning map that we put together. And I would especially highlight our chair, Jason Morgan, and our vice chair, Alyssa Jones, who really did an amazing job shepherding the group through the process. So, kudos to them. I'd also like to thank my colleagues in the Office of Planning and Zoning and the other departments for their input and their guidance as we moved through this process, and also the Planning Advisory Board for their careful consideration of the work. And then, finally, the residents of Region Three who provided their input and their feedback throughout this process and really helped shape the work that is in front of you now. So, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Take her.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I echo everything that y'all just said about all the staff and stakeholder advisory group. But I want to give a special shout out to Patrick Hughes for working very closely with the Queenstown community over many, many meetings. They have, they are, they are in a very difficult quandary in that community, but they are an absolutely lovely community. And I look forward to, hopefully, this, this region plan and the zoning that goes along with it will help to preserve that residential community for decades to come. It has many challenges, but you worked beautifully with that community, and I just want to personally thank you for that. And I want to thank the Stakeholder Advisory Committee for their hard work as well. And of course, I always have to thank Kristin Etzel, who, without her diligence, I would not be the council member that I am. She had worked really hard through all of these to make sure that we got it, we got it as right as we could get it for all of these properties in our district. So, thank you, Kristin, wherever you are.
Okay. All right. We will now open the joint public hearing on Bill Number 1125 and Bill Number 1225. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair. We did not.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 1125 and/or Bill Number 1225? Seeing no movement, the joint public hearing on Bill Number 1125 and 1225 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1125 and 1225.
Bill Number 1125, Inordinance Concerning General Development Plan, Region Three Plan. Bill Number 1225, Inordinance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning, Region Three.
Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 1125 as amended.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 1125 as amended has passed.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 1225 as amended.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 1225 as amended has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1425 as amended.
Bill Number 1425, Inordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Archaeological Resources.
Mr. Volkey?
Just gonna make this very quick. We've talked about this bill a lot. So, let's put it in the rearview, make it history, and move forward. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Kelly Kenny, our Supervising County Attorney, Christina Pampa, our Deputy Planning and Zoning Officer, Darian Beverungan, our Acting Planning Administrator for Cultural Resources. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All right. As a reminder, we closed the public hearing and held the vote on, no, no, I'm sorry. Am I right? Am I in the right place? No, I've jumped ahead. I'm sorry. Not following my script very well tonight. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 1425.
I just had one quick question.
Sure.
The administration is supportive of the current bill, amended bill, correct?
Christina Pomp with the Office of Planning and-- Yes, well, the amendments were sponsored by the administration, and we did get to a mutually agreed-upon conclusion on this bill. So yes.
Okay.
All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 1425 as amended. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 1425? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 1425 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1425 as amended.
Bill Number 1425, In Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Archaeological Resources.
Any further discussion? Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 1425 as amended.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 1425 as amended has passed.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 2425 as amended.
Bill Number 2425, In Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Regional Commercial Complexes.
Mr. Smith, this is your bill.
I think we're right at the cusp of trying to find a few more words that could be amenable to both the administration as well as the requesters. And so we will, I will ask at the appropriate time to delay the bill another couple of weeks just to finalize those conversations. So that's it. And just for the record, 2425 is the regional commercial complex bill that allows some additional flexibility there in the Arundel Mills complex. The RCC is specific to one location in the county. It is the technical term for Arundel Mills Mall, and that grounds that it sits on. So we're not, it's not impacting any other area outside of the county except that one place at Arundel Mills Mall. So just for the record, that's it.
Administration?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Lynn Miller, our Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer, Lori Blair Klosmeyer, our Deputy County Attorney. Councilmember is correct, we are close. There is a little bit of language left to work out on potential amendment, but we're happy to answer any questions.
Any discussion or questions? Okay, as a reminder, we closed the public hearing and held the vote on Bill Number 2425 as amended on April 21st. So Mr. Smith, would you like to make a motion to hold this tonight?
I would like to make a motion to hold this vote till May 19, 2025.
We have a motion to hold Bill Number 2425 as amended until May 19, 2025. We have a second. Madam Secretary, please call the roll to hold Bill Number 2425 as amended.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Until May 19, 2025.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to hold Bill Number 2425 as amended until May 19 has passed.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 2525 as amended.
Bill Number 2525, In Ordnance Concerning Branches of County Government, Executive Branch, Public Safety, Department of Animal Services, Force Commissions and Similar Bodies, Animal Welfare Council, Personnel Exempt Service, Public Ethics, Financial Disclosure, Director of Animal Services.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Lori Blair Klosmeyer, Deputy County Attorney, Claudia Rolle, our Animal Care and Control Administrator, and Hannah Dyer, our Deputy Chief Administrative Officer. This bill sets up Animal Services as its own separate department, gets it out from under the Police Department. I know we've discussed it at a prior council meeting as well as a council work session. We're happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Ms. Picker? No? Okay. All right. We will, so I do have a question. So we received some information, but now, since we have Ms. Rolle here, I would like for you to talk to us about the new positions that are going to be included under the restructuring, whether you or Ms. Dyer. The new positions that would be included under the new department.
The Director of the Department, that is the one that's in the fiscal impact. Yeah. There are other positions that are proposed in the budget. Those are not contingent on the department change. Those--
So only the Director of the Department is included in this bill?
So I can elaborate a little bit, but I do want to reiterate what Claudia said, that none of those positions are contingent on this bill passing. But there were kind of two categories in terms of the staffing proposal for the Department of Animal Services. We have two completely new positions related to the creation of the new department. That's the Director position that Claudia mentioned, as well as a Management Assistant Two that would handle some personnel and IT functions, as well as some other responsibilities that relate to kind of separating it from the larger police department, which handled those responsibilities before. And then there also is proposed a reclassification of the current Animal Care Administrator position to a Deputy Director for Animal Services. That's kind of a neutral change, though, because the administrator is an NR20 classification, and that is the same classification as the new Deputy Director position. And then there is a separate category that we're not going to really get into a ton of detail today, but I'm sure you will cover in the budget hearing for Animal Services, of proposed new positions related to kind of ongoing operational services that the administration would still propose regardless of what happens with Bill 2525.
What else? Have any questions? So we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 2525 as amended. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay, no one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 2525? I do see some, some folks coming up. So please come at the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool.
Linda Mazer, 752, Dividing Creek Road, Arnold, Maryland, 21012. Good evening. I'm the Chair of the Animal Welfare Council, and previously, we expressed our strong unanimous support for Bill 2525. Our support still stands tonight. While we have no objection to Amendment Number Four, we ask that you consider holding this amendment and addressing it at the same time as the other items that need to be updated in the code after Bill 2525. There is a list of recommendations for a code update that include reconsideration of the conditions for dangerous dogs, an update for reckless owners, and stipulations for off-leash dog parks. Could this amendment be done at that time? We respectfully ask that you consider withdrawing Amendment Number Four to be considered later. Please don't hold up Bill 2525 that establishes the new Department of Animal Services. We're so close. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? So I see no movement. The public hearing on Bill Number 2525 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 2525 as amended.
Bill Number 2525, In Ordnance Concerning Branches of County Government, Executive Branch, Public Safety, Department of Animal Services, Force Commissions and Similar Bodies, Animal Welfare Council, Personnel Exempt Service, Public Ethics, Financial Disclosure, Director of Animal Services.
Okay. There is one amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Four.
Amendment Number Four, this amendment clarifies that an animal at large is off-leash or not restrained by a leash off of the property of its owner or person responsible for the animal.
Okay, this is my amendment. There, this is just clarifying for what a restraint by a leash would be. While I know that that is not directly pertaining to the development of the department, it was included in the bill, and we want to make sure that everything in the bill is most accurate and up to date when it's on there. So I would ask for my colleague's support for that. May I have a motion? Oh, I make the motion. Can I have a motion to adopt? Yes, motion to adopt. Is there any discussion? What? I know, I forget which things I can do and which I can't. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Four.
I'm sorry. Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're comfortable with this amendment.
Okay. Sorry about that. Yes, Ms. Rodvian?
I have a question. Maybe this is for you or for someone at the table. I'm concerned about the idea that off-leash on the property-- I'm sorry, that off-leash, okay, I'm trying to make sure I'm reading this correctly. The amendment clarifies that an animal at large is off-leash or not restrained by a leash off of the property of its owner or person responsible for the animal. So if an animal is off-leash on the property of the owner, that by itself, I guess that by itself wouldn't be at large, but I could also see that being a risk. I'm, maybe I'm confusing. Maybe I'm trying to put two things together. If an animal is off-leash on the, on the property, even if the owner owns that property, I'm just thinking of occasions where I've been, you know, walking down a sidewalk, and you have, you know, an aggressive growling dog who's coming right up to the edge of the property line. There might be an electric fence, but you don't know. There might not be an electric fence. It might be a trained dog that knows the boundaries of its property. And I suppose that maybe, maybe that's going to a different, a different discussion than what this amendment is addressing.
I can maybe kill some time while Claudia looks, takes a look closer. But this kind of falls into the category of language that we were carrying over in this bill because we had to update a lot to change from the Police Department to the new Department of Animal Services, from department to agency, that kind of thing. So we were trying not to make any policy changes in this bill. We were really trying to stay focused on just the new department and the new licensing scheme. So I think the intent, this was something that I believe came from legislative staff, and the intent was just to clean up, to make sure that the language matched, you know, exactly the situation. So I know it got a little confusing when we were talking through everything. Claudia, do you want to weigh in?
Yeah. To answer your question, it is, it is, at large means off the property of an animal's, of an animal's owner, and not being leashed or under control. So if I'm understanding the scenario, I'm gardening in my front yard, and my big old dog's chilling next to me and on my property, he's not at large.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely agree with that. I guess I'm looking at maybe a separate, like a separate concern. So maybe this is just, like, the idea here is to keep this, to just carry over the language and address a concern like the one I'm raising separately. Okay. But you can see how that would be, you know, that could be a concern if--
Yes.
Okay.
I understand your concern.
Okay, all right. Then I will be like Elsa and let it go.
Well, and I think as we've said too, that when we get into, as we've had previous discussions about the dangerous, you know, animals, that it could be something that further clarify in future legislation as we come up. So. Any further discussion or questions? All right.
Ms. Hummer?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to piece it together by handwriting it into the bill. I'm rushing, and so I'm having trouble doing it. Do you have the language in, like, a full sentence, what that number--
Is it front?
How it would read once we make the changes? I think that might help understand it a little bit better.
I penciled it in if somebody just wants me to read it.
Yeah, that would be perfect. Yeah, yeah.
So it would, it would read, "at large" means "off the property of an animal's owner," and "is not restrained by a leash," or "the owner," or "under the control of a responsible person." I can read it again if anybody needs it.
If you don't mind one more time, just, it would be helpful. Thank you.
So "at large" means "off the property of an animal's owner," and "is not restrained by a leash," or "the owner," or "under control of a responsible person." So not on a leash, not restrained by the owner, or under the control of a responsible person.
Thank you.
Your arms around the dog, I guess.
Super helpful.
Sure.
All right. Any further questions? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Four.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Amendment Number Four has been adopted.
Okay, Bill Number 2525 as amended will be heard on May 19, 2025. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 2625 as amended.
Bill Number 2625, In Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Public Charter Schools.
Madam Chair, you're in it.
Yes, I was waiting to sit down. Mr. Smith, your bill?
Yes, thank you for indulging us with this bill. This, again, just is to clarify or to work on an issue with one of the public charter entities that was simply trying to go through the planning and zoning process to some extent, and be treated the same as, as, as other public entities, public school system entities, when it comes to their facilities. There's a school that's trying to expand and procure a facility, a building adjacent to it, and there were some concerns about whether or not they should follow the same processes the public school system and have, allow some of those same attributes. And so this was an effort to correct that because the public school system is involved in all of those educational decisions ultimately. And so with that said, hopefully we can just move on from this issue.
All right. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me, I have Lynn Miller, our Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer, and Lori Blair Klosmeyer, Deputy County Attorney. We support the bill. Happy to answer any questions.
Any discussion? All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 2625 as amended. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay, no one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 2625? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 2625 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 2625 as amended.
Bill Number 2625, In Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Public Charter Schools.
No further discussion. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 2625 as amended.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 2625 as amended has passed.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 2825.
Bill Number 2825, In Ordnance Concerning Rules of Practice and Procedure of the Board of Appeals Amendments.
Okay. This is an update for the rules of the Board of Appeals. They are pretty straightforward, just updating some language, and to better align the rules to the ongoing practices of the Board of Appeals. Administration, y'all have anything to add to that? Nope? Okay. All right. Is there any discussion? Ms. Rodvian?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nope? Okay. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 2825. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 2825? I know we have some members of the Board of Appeals here. If you would like to come up and speak on it, please come on up. Nobody wants to? They just want to watch us and give us the thumbs up. Okay. All right. So there's no further discussion. The public hearing on Bill Number 2825 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 2825.
Bill Number 2825, In Ordnance Concerning Rules of Practice and Procedure of the Board of Appeals Amendments.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 2825.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 2825 has passed.
And from our friends from the Board of Appeals, thank you for all you do. Y'all, y'all put in many, many hours helping this county that most people don't see or-- Y'all put in many, many hours helping this county that most people don't see or hear about, and we appreciate you, and we hope that these rules help you to be even more efficient in the work you do. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 2925.
Bill Number 2925, An Ordnance Concerning Construction, Property, and Maintenance Codes, Codes and Supplements, Zoning, Conditional Uses, Large Animal Veterinary Clinic.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We discussed this bill in work session. There is, in my opinion, a critical shortage of large animal veterinary surgeons in general, but definitely in our local geographic area, which creates a very strong need for facilitating the ability of, you know, large animal veterinary surgeons to... We need access for our agricultural community, access that is not, you know, a two-hour drive, putting an animal's life at risk in the process. And so, the purpose of this bill is to help facilitate those large animal surgeons to be able to open and operate within our county, you know, for the betterment of the animals and the people who care for those animals as well at the appropriate time. I do have an amendment for consideration.
All right. Administration?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me, I have Lynn Miller, our Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer, Andrew McCarr our Assistant Director of Inspections and Permits, and Kelly Kenny, our Supervising County Attorney. I do want to thank the sponsor. We had a couple of long meetings discussing the amendment language that we support, and we're happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any discussion? Okay, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 2925. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received five pieces, which were shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. Christopher Cuniculia... I know I'm pronouncing that wrong, I'm sorry. Deanna Tice and Audrey Contardo. And if there's anyone else who wishes to speak on Bill 2925, you may come up at this time as well.
Hello, I'm Dr. Cunicula. Large animal surgeon, and I live in Deo, Maryland. I want to thank Councilwoman Ledbetter for bringing this bill and the opportunity to speak to you all this evening to allow this large animal veterinary hospital on agricultural zone land. So, first, as Councilwoman Ledbetter already sort of hinted at, what's the need? Maryland, interestingly enough, is the most horse-dense state in the country. Here in Anarondo County specifically, there's approximately 4,500 horses. And another interesting fact is neighboring Howard County is the most horse-dense county in the entire country. So, clearly, there's a need as far as the patients we need to serve. Currently, there is not a facility that is built, staffed, and operating to receive large animal surgical and critical care cases. So, not only from an economic perspective is that revenue leaving the state, because right now, the closest facilities are the Equine Medical Center in Leesburg, Virginia, or New Bolton Center in Kennet Square, Pennsylvania, all sorts significantly negatively affects the outcome and prognosis of these cases. To give you some more specific veterinary context, if you have a horse with a large colon volus, you have about six hours before the prognosis is extremely poor. If you have a horse that needs a C-section, you have about an hour to save that foal. So, when we have horse owners having to drive even an hour and a half to Leesburg on a good day with no traffic, that is going to significantly affect the outcome. Currently, in the state, there's only four boarded large animal surgeons that even reside in the state of Maryland, two of them very nearing retirement, and one only does elective procedures only in northern Maryland, and then myself. So, me and my team here are very committed to trying to bring this goal and bring the services to this area. And I think in addition, the other goal for the facility is to really be a beacon for education, not only for the high school students in 4H, but also for the future veterinary school that's opening on the eastern shore.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Deana Tice, 4252 Blair Lane, Harwood, President of the Anarondo County Farm Bureau and owner of Enticement Stables. We house, care for, and train 100 horses. We have great overworked local veterinarians, but they do not have the capacity to do surgery or more in-depth diagnostics on the horses. We travel 75 to 100 miles to take our horses to Virginia or Pennsylvania to be cared for. This trip puts stress on sick horses, and sometimes, they don't make it. In the last year, our clients have spent over $100,000 in those states. Having a large animal veterinary hospital in our area would help our agricultural industry. The Maryland horse industry is a $2.9 billion economic impact. In Anarondo County, we have 950 stables, with equine being our number-one agriculture industry in our county. A national shortage of 15,000 veterinarians is expected in 2025. Only 1.5% of those veterinary students will graduate and enter into equine medicine. 50% of those will leave their path within five years. They need a great facility to work in to stay in large animal practice. Anarondo County is home to one of the only board-certified veterinarian surgeons, to my left, with focus in large animals in the state of Maryland. A large animal hospital will create jobs for our residents, attract equestrian businesses to our area, and provide agriculture education for our students. Southern FFA students are getting animal science classes, but they need a place to intern to enter vet school, and University of Maryland is starting a vet school on the eastern shore. The over 600 members of Anarondo County Farm Bureau all want a large animal veterinary hospital. Please vote favorable for this to help our equestrian and large animals in Anarondo County and surrounding areas. Thank you.
2715 Bradbury Court, Davidsonville, Maryland. I've been riding horses at Enticement Stables since I was 10, and I'm a sophomore sem student at South River High School. I'm here to support Bill 29-25 to define large animal veterinary clinics separately from small animal clinics and make them a conditional use in RA zoning. In the past three years, I've had two horses that needed surgery, and one of which had to be trailered across the Bay Bridge multiple times to receive the care he needed. In addition to the several hundred dollars my parents had to spend in fees for that, trailering him to his appointments took our barn owner away from her small business for several hours. I can't help but think about her and the 160 other equine-related operations in the county, according to the U.S. Census, and imagine how many hours Anarondo small business owners spend trailering six animals across the region, ensuring they can receive the care they need. We shouldn't have to sacrifice our animals' well-being because barn managers can't afford to take a half-day, or owners struggle to pay for long-distance trailering fees to get their horse to an emergency vet. A final consideration I want to leave you with is that a large animal hospital in Anarondo would not only serve the county, but the whole region. Councilmembers, thank you for taking the time to hear my testimony, and I appreciate your positive support of Bill 29-25. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you all. So, all right. The public hearing on Bill Number 2925 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 2925.
Bill Number 2925, An Ordnance Concerning Construction, Property, and Maintenance Codes, Codes and Supplements, Zoning, Conditional Uses, Large Animal Veterinary Clinic.
Okay. There is one amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment modifies the definition of agricultural buildings in the construction code to include a large animal veterinary clinic if located in an existing building constructed under a building permit. Clarifies the operator of a large animal veterinary clinic must be a licensed diplomat of the American College of Veterinary Surgeons as certain conditional uses to a large animal veterinary clinic and making certain technical changes.
Okay. Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I would very much like to thank administration and the Ad Commission. We worked hard together. I think I mentioned at the work session, the language as the bill was introduced, there was a little bit of concern from various departments that it was a little bit too permissive. We certainly want to facilitate and allow this type of business to open. We also want to make sure we're keeping the general welfare of the public in mind as well, making sure buildings are safe and things like that. So, this amendment kind of tightens things up a little bit and finds, I think, that sweet balance spot where, my understanding is, administration is comfortable, Ad Commission is comfortable, and we can move forward with this language and be able to get this done. So, motion to adopt.
Rodvian, second.
Okay. Any discussion? Ms. Fiedler?
So, there's a motion on the table. I have a question, but I'll wait until after we vote on the amendment.
Okay. All right. Administration?
We support the amendment. We're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey is absent. Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Amendment Number One has been adopted.
Okay. Bill Number 2925 as amended will be heard on May 19, 2025. And yes, I knew you had a question.
Just really quickly, the qualification for a large animal, I know we were talking about horses, but I would assume that there are other animals that fall in the large animal category. I'm thinking specifically pigs.
The definition is going to retain the different... It's an example. There's other animals included in the definition as examples. But this specific, the American College of Veterinary Surgeons, that is a... That person is authorized to work on a variety of large animals, is my understanding. If... I don't know if we...
Please, please tell us what animals qualify under that real quick.
Alfred thanks you too.
That specific title, Ms. Fiedler, that was included, was specifically kind of cherry-pipped to match essentially the license, the official title that they have. We wanted to make sure that there was no misunderstanding.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I just... I just really wanted to say that was a very, like, a very appreciated trio of testimony from the three of you. It was very valuable and helpful, so thank you.
Yes. So, all right. So, let's see. Okay, so this Bill Number 2925 as amended will be heard on May 19, 2025. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 3025.
Bill Number 3025, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, BWI Mixed Use Overlay Area.
Mr. Smith, this is your bill.
Madam Chair, I believe this is... We're voting on this tonight. I think we've reached a consensus with the administration. Just to remind everyone, this was a minor tweak to the overlay itself. There were some conjoined parcels where one portion of it was not within the boundary, and so, that was adjusted. And then, I think there was additional clarification on stackable townhouses was another addition to this as a type of development that could occur within the overlay itself. And so, those are the two sort of minor tweaks that we did to the overlay. Outside of that, that's... Hopefully, we can end this discussion and then move on to other land use items.
Okay. Administration?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. I have Lynn Miller, our Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer, and Kelly Kenny, our Supervising County Attorney. We support the bill, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. All right. Any discussion? All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 3025. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 3025? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 3025 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 3025.
Bill Number 3025, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, BWI Mixed Use Overlay Area.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Smith? Yep. Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 3025.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative.